Okay, by the, by the electronic clock, it is now 6:30. And we'll call the Kodiak Island Borough regular meeting, Assembly regular meeting, on May 19, 2022, 6:30 PM. We're in the chambers, the Assembly chambers, we'll call it to order. And if Major Dave Davis will give us an invocation, please. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's a little bit easier than presiding deputy somebody. It's beautiful days. We waited all winter for a week like this. Join me, please. Gracious heavenly Father, we give you the praise and glory. We thank you for the privilege of freedom to gather here this evening. Father, we ask for a fresh anointing upon our mayor, our Assembly members and staff, as they continue to work for the well-being of our whole island community. Father, we have many visitors expected to the island. We would ask for safe passage. We would ask for a well, safe event through Memorial Weekend and Crab Festival. Father, we continually give you the praise and glory for your many blessings you have lavished upon us as your people. Thank you. We pray these things in the sacred and precious, powerful name of our Lord. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are gathered on the traditional homeland of the Tsukpiak Alutik people and acknowledge the ten tribes of the Kodiak Alutik region. We recognize the Alutik culture that enriches our community to this day. With that, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Arndt.
Here.
Mr. Delgado.
Here.
Mr. Griffin.
Here.
Mr. Smiley.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Turner.
Here.
Ms. Williams.
Here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
You have a quorum?
Thank you. Scott?
On approval of the agenda, I was basically going to move to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
And consent agenda.
Do we have a second? Can I do this by role, by voicemail? I gotta be careful now, we got a clerk here that knows the rules to the T. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hearing none? Motion passes. That brings us to citizens' comments. If you are calling in, you can call in at 907-486-3231, toll-free, 1-855-492-9202. You're allocated three minutes each. Please sign in if you're here, and in all cases, state your name for the record. And if you're calling in, please turn down your listening device so we don't get feedback. And please be respectful. Thank you.
Yes, good evening, and thank you. My name is David Conrad, and I am standing here representing the fire departments of the Kodiak Island. And I would like to personally thank the residents of the island for having a little bit of restraint in the last week without all of the, without having any rain. I'm pretty sad that our weekend sounds like it's going to be a little bit wet, but we absolutely need the water. And I would much rather not respond to a fire than a fire. So thank you very much for those of you who held off. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Do we have any call-ins? Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly? Seeing none, we will... Oh, I'm sorry.
I was listening to a report on a Homer radio station about University of Alaska economics professor Ralph Townsend, who has been studying the state's demographics. He said that Alaska since 2010 keeps having a population drop, and I was very concerned about that. He said that the labor pool is shrinking too of people here that can work. And the reason it struck me so much was because I, back in the '60s, I was a Boise, Idaho resident, and I remember the town had 30,000 people. And I remember it being always a conservative government from what people said. I remember as a ninth grader there, I had to take civics, and I was pretty disappointed when I found out that that is not a requirement in the Kodiak Island Borough School District. And I'm hoping that'll change. I remember Boise seemed like it was deeply shocked by a death of one of my classmates when I was an eighth grader there. His father not only killed him, but he killed three of his siblings, the child siblings. And that might explain, since alcohol was involved, the father being a known alcoholic, that might explain why later on Boise adopted a policy, at least it was still going on in the 1990s when I was visiting there in 10th and college class, whereby the bars and liquor establishments all closed at 11:00 PM. And I just wonder if maybe, maybe this is what needs to happen here. I know I'll probably get tarred and feathered when I walk out here by some of the people that are, you know, out there in Cyberland for saying it, but I just am amazed Boise has like a quarter of a million people now. And from the early '60s of 30,000 to a quarter of a million people, it seems to bring home the point that there are good things about conservative government.
Can you wrap this up? Your three minutes have passed.
I think that was all I mostly wanted to say. I just would like to see the borough grow like Ada County did. I really feel that there's a book out called the, it's written by a historian, and it's called The Poverty of Nations, and it does tell how nations do fall when there's a non-conservative type of government that is in charge. I'm not accusing anybody, I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any phone calls? Anybody else wishing to address the Assembly? With that, we will move on. We have no awards and presentations. Any committee reports from the Assembly? Scott Smiley.
I attended the school board meeting on Monday, which was pretty interesting. There were a whole number of retirements there, including retirements of two of the principals of elementary schools. Both of those positions have been filled, but there are other empty positions that they're searching for good candidates, not only in the U.S. but also overseas. There was a very interesting presentation by CTE, which means Career and Technical Education, on a program they had called Workshop, I guess. It was 40 hours of work, of time, for students with industry and educators altogether. Kind of a 40-hour boot camp, I guess, is the way the IT guys would talk about it, which was pretty interesting in terms of the talk that the students had, how good it was for them. And other than that, the school board meeting went just fine. I noticed that the new superintendent is here, present here, Ms. Dr. Cindy Mica. So... That's it.
Any other committee reports?
Thank you. On Wednesday of this week, I attended the Swampee Board of Directors meeting, and Swampee's going strong. Their main project now is encouraging different regions across southwest Alaska to participate in the statewide SEDS process. They've already done the Kodiak portion, so that went really well. Two weeks ago, I was in Valdez for the Prince William Sound Citizens Advisory Council meeting, and it was really neat to be a part of an organization that has that strong of a budget. I think this year's budget is $3.8 million, and it was neat to see that community and the work that they're doing down there. And that's a whole report, which I think I sent the clerks, but if not, I will, that I get a monthly report of what they're doing, and I'll just forward that. If you ever have questions about that report, I'm happy to answer whatever I know. And I have started on their Information and Education Committee in the shoes of someone who had served for 27 years, so I have some big shoes to fill down there, but I'm excited to get started. Thanks.
Thank you, Amy. Any other committee reports from the Assembly? Seeing none, we will move on. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll go to the Borough Manager's Report. Roxanne.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So several reports for tonight. I wanted to convey that last Friday, I attended the housing study delivery to the community, and it was a great chance to get to meet with so many people because so many organizations are interested in improving housing here. And they were very happy to hear that the borough is willing to participate in such kinds of measures. And what I would like to do is get very strategic about this, and look at some maps, and figure out how we can get better partnerships and square footage so we can get some housing developments going, and do that in a collaborative way with organizations throughout the island to bring that back to the Assembly, so you guys can have your say too in that and view that with your eyes. But the study asked us to get strategic, the borough specifically, to get strategic about maps, and I've been working with SEMA on that, but you'll hear more about that in the future days as we progress with this. Can I answer any questions about that? I don't have a heck of a lot of answers right now, but it's stuff that I'm really excited to work on, to try to help. I also wanted to read some information that I got from our Mark Hickey lobbyist, and this is about what has gone on with the budget. He said he wanted to provide this brief summary, and he'll have a more complete summary on Monday, but I'll be sure that that gets distributed out to the Assembly so you can consume the more complete. But here are some of the highlights. So far, it's $32,000 per person combined for the 2022 PFD Energy Cost Relief Check. This should relieve pressure to make budget cuts because of a budget shortfall caused by a larger dividend, but our lobbyist is not sure how the governor is going to see this. He said there's full funding for K-12 public education, $57 million in addition, in additional one-time money, and a $30 BSA increase included in the approved Alaska REEDS Act. Forward funding of K-12 for fiscal year '24 is included, but probably only at about 60% can be funded or given other spending. So then he said there's $220 million for back payment of fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '22 for school bond debt reimbursement, coupled with the 100% reimbursement for '23. He said he thinks we can plan on fiscal year '23 payments since the governor requested these funds, but what the governor plans to do about '17 through '22 remains unclear. He said there's funding capitalization deposits in the Community Assistance Fund to support $30 million in annual payments for fiscal year '23 and '24. There's funding for the Alaska Marine Highway System operations with an increase per initial request by the governor. No delay on proceeding with the Testamina vessel replacement project. $100 million in state funds for major maintenance projects, and I'm sorry to say this, Peterson roof replacement is at the $110 million level. He said that this will hopefully put the project high for next year. He said there's full funding for the PCE program, Senate Bill 243 passed the legislature. It increases the payment from 500 kilowatts per hour to 750 kilowatts per hour for eligible participants. And there's $15 million included for the new Kodiak Fire Hall. And he said this is all up to what the governor will do as far as the governor's vetoes. He said he'll know more in June, and we can let him know if we have any questions. I also wanted to report that he is still working on the existing payments that we have school bond debt reimbursement for. The easiest way I can say this complicated matter is that the payments that we will receive from now until the end of the calendar year will actually add up to 42%. So we'll be getting additional funding that after you average it all out, we'll make sure that we get 42% versus 36 or 37, like we were getting before. However, the lobbyist will make sure that it remains at that level, so we will get the 42%. I wanted to also provide what I consider to be some good news. There was a House Bill 227 under LNC, and there was an amendment that was proposed by Senator Mchuckey. And what this is, is it's a Planning and Zoning Commission clarification, because there were complaints that were coming from other boroughs, that you need certain seats for city folks on your Planning and Zoning Commission, and then certain seats borough-wide. Well, they have removed the requirement to have the certain seats for the cities, and it can just be from the borough as a whole. So I called Senator Mchuckey's office to thank him for that amendment. This actually came from the Kenai Borough, because Kenai then has to have certain members from Homer, Soldatna, and Kenai, and it's a challenge for them to do that, but I think this is something that will help with several second-class boroughs like we are. So that's up for the governor's approval, but fingers are crossed. At that point, if the governor does sign it, we'll need to change our code, and I'll bring that back to the Assembly, because this also could remove a two-step process that we have right now, where the City Council approves a Planning and Zoning Commissioner, and then the Assembly. So we'll keep an eye on that. In other news, I just wanted to report that regarding the HR matter with the grievance that I've been working through, I think I've been able to satisfy 90% or more of the issue without this going to arbitration, but I'll know for sure, hopefully tomorrow or earlier next week if that's the case. And then also, some unfortunate news is that we experienced an oil spill, and I wanted to invite Dave Conrad up to explain a little more about that and the mitigations that are taking place to address this.
Thank you. So first of all, we were spilled upon. It was not caused by us. There was an unfortunate incident where there was a mix-up with one of the fuel providers. There was some confusion between KFRC Fisheries Research Center, and they plugged into the smaller tank. How, how this is going to be resolved, I was a little bit concerned at the beginning because we weren't informed, at least in the way that I believe we should be informed. By the end of today, I spoke with this firm's head safety officer, and he will be meeting me tomorrow as soon as he got off the airplane, and they have claimed full responsibility. And my comment is that, you know, in the position that I'm at, because of where this happened and in being a public facility, that it is most important to me that the taxpayers of Kodiak Island Borough do not bear the cost of any of this, because it was not caused by anything that the borough had to do. So we will track this. We believe it was somewhere over five gallons, which doesn't sound like a lot until you put it in gravel. So we are in the process of cleaning it up. We will stay on this, and it sounds like we now do have the good faith commitment of the firm that was responsible. Any questions, I'm happy to answer.
And that's the end of my report. I can answer any questions that the Assembly may have.
Does somebody have any questions for the manager? Scott Smiley.
Does the decision about the seating on the Planning and Zoning Commission have ramified to other committees that we have, like Consolidation Committee, for example?
I looked at the text of this. This is just pertaining to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And how it tied into the exact House bill, I still have to figure out, but yeah, that, they clarified it there because there were a couple of boroughs that expressed concern, but we could bring that up to our congressional offices if that's what we'd want.
I think that's wise.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions? Jeff?
Just clarity. The payments on bond debt from 36% or 37% up to 42%, are those going to be spread out over the remainder of this fiscal year or calendar year?
Dora, do you know?
Because this is probably part of the state's this fiscal year appropriations. It will probably come in the form of the payment we receive in July or late, or early August. They withhold a percentage of our payment to make sure that we've made our bond debt payments, and then once, at the end of the fiscal year, we prove that we made our bond debt payments, they release that retainage back to us. So I'm assuming we'll get it at the end of the fiscal year.
Yeah, I didn't, I'm sorry. I said calendar year. I was just trying to state that it's a future payment within the calendar, I should have said it that way.
Any other questions for the manager? Seeing none, we move on to messages from the Borough Mayor. I really don't have much to say at this meeting right now. We have some big things on our, on our agenda tonight, and I think we'll address those as we come to them. My heart goes out to the family who lost their child. And I also thank the community for all the help in search and rescue on that, as well as the Fire Department, the Coast Guard, State Troopers, and everybody else. And that's all I have to say. With that, we move on to unfinished business. First up is ordinance number FY 2022, excuse me, -17, mending the code by removing the provisions that pertain to declaration of a disaster or emergency. Do we have a staff report?
No, because this came from the Assembly.
Scott, you want to address this, then?
I guess so. Basically, what we're doing with this is removing what was added two years ago when the emergency was declared. And then as part of things here after the budget, we'll go through and, and review, review everything, and there's possibly some, there's been, I want to say, call it an exit report out of the emergency committee. So the city and the borough are going to be looking at changing the way we do things to include the school district and other, other organizations. So a lot of things were learned from it. But this particular thing, there is no, there is no exit. There was no timeframe. We're two years later, it's time to get out of it. There is no emergency declared.
Scott, do you want to make a motion? I forgot to put this on the table.
The motion's on the floor.
Oh, it's on the floor. Thank you. You're right. Okay. Thank you.
So we postponed it, Bill, while you were gone, so...
That's right. That's true. You're right. Okay, thank you.
So basically, we're just, we're just cleaning up what we did two years ago, and then we'll fix things with it. So that's, this is a temporary thing in one sense, but this particular ordinance, and it's, it's a reason that the two of us that are left on the Assembly, at the time this was passed, voted no on it, because there was no exit on it. There needed to be a time period. So anyway, emergency's over right now. I'm sure there'll be another one coming up before too long, the way things go, but we'll go from there. So thank you.
Okay, it's open for comments to the Assembly. Anybody wishing to comment on this? Joe?
I just wanted to make it clear that what we're doing is, we are taking out the portion that allows us to have virtual meetings in the case of an emergency declaration that was declared by either the president, or the governor, or the Emergency Services Council. So I just hope everybody knows that's what we're doing, is that we will no longer be able to have virtual meetings unless we go through this effort again to make it so. I myself do think that meeting together is important, and I'd much rather meet this way with the public and with us here. But having us, having, taking a tool away from us to use in the case of another emergency, and, you know, it just brings us back to, again, where we have to work again to reinstate this. I see no problem with leaving it in there. I don't think that we're going to have a problem with virtual meetings or people wanting to have them. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else? Jared?
Yeah, I've talked about this before, so I won't go. I won't, I won't belabor it too much, but I think we should keep the language in here. It, it keeps things flexible for us. As, as has been mentioned, there could be another disaster with the monkeypox next week, where we would have to rely on this kind of language to, to meet virtually. I know nothing about monkeypox, who knows? But the flexibility, I think, for us is important. There's nothing in here that requires us to have virtual meetings. All the language in what we have is conditional. If the problem with the language has to do with a termination point for, for this, then let's amend the language with that language. As a professional editor, it is much easier to amend and revise language that you already have. When you take language out and you start from scratch, start from nothing, it's much more difficult to do. We have some good, decent language here, that if there's something wrong with it, let's amend the language instead of taking away the flexibility of, of the Assembly. So I'll be voting against this.
James, then Scott.
I'll let Scott speak first, because I have an amendment.
Okay. Scott, go ahead.
Thank you. Basically, between four and five years ago, Kodiak Island Borough had an ordinance changed that was going to allow these virtual meetings, and the public came out vehemently opposed to it, and the Assembly did not adopt it. So no, I don't think virtual meetings should happen unless the Assembly comes together and makes that determination. Automatic? No. At the mayor's discretion. No, that's what this says. So no, I'm not in favor of this. It needs to be removed. It was added two years ago for COVID, specifically, with no end date, and it continued for two years. Needs to go away.
James?
If nobody else has any comments?
Well, I do, but I, I think probably I can wait. Second bite of your apple, go ahead.
I think that my concern is that from listening to the people that were talking before our meetings in favor of this, it sounded as if they thought we were doing away with the emergency declaration, rather than the language that is being deleted. So I think there was a little bit of miscommunication between us and the people that were listening. So I'm not, I don't know how that affects what Mr. Arndt is, his concerns, but from listening to the concerns of the public out there, it wasn't, their concerns, at least to my ears, didn't sound like they're concerned that we're going to have, or the option was to have virtual meetings or not. It was the actual emergency that we are under that we're concerned with. But just, just wanted to put that out there, yeah.
Okay. James, go ahead.
So I just have two, three, three amendments. I guess I can start with Section A, which is basically changing the last three words or other means, striking those, and replacing them with "may be limited." So it would read... So it would read, "Public meetings, all," excuse me, "public meetings. All official meetings of the Assembly shall be open to the public. The Journal of Proceedings shall be open to public inspection. When a disaster or emergency has been declared, physical attendance by the public may be limited. When a disaster or emergency is declared, broadcasting may be limited." So that's the first one. Would you like to discuss that one and then make a second amendment? Or would you like me to make all the amendments at once?
Why don't you make them all at once, and then you need a second, then we'll discuss them.
Okay. In Section B, in the center of the, in the center of that paragraph on line thirty-seven, or excuse me, make sure that I'm, line thirty-six of the original text, it says, "except for work sessions and emergency meetings." And I would like it to state, "for all meetings" of the Assembly, I should say.
So your words would say, "except for all meetings?"
No.
No.
It would say, so basically, the, "A quorum for members of the Assembly shall constitute a quorum. Attendance of the Assembly member shall be in person and may not be by teleconference, excuse me, by teleconference for all meetings of the Assembly."
So you're basically doing away with emergency and work sessions. Okay.
Correct.
Okay. And then next?
If I can get my computer to work.
Scott has a hard copy if you need it.
He does not have this hard copy.
I don't have his amendment.
In Section E, so I'm going to just read the whole thing because I just retyped the whole thing. So it says, "If a declaration of a disaster or emergency has been issued by the President of the United States, the Governor of Alaska, or the Emergency Services Council, KIB two point one zero, excuse me, one one zero dot zero three zero, which includes areas within the Kodiak Island Borough. The Mayor of Kodiak Island Borough, KIB two point three zero point zero four zero C, may determine the provisions of subsection B of this section, requiring in-person attendance and prohibiting participation by teleconference shall not apply during the period of the declaration is in effect. The Assembly members may participate by teleconference and be counted as part of a quorum, even if they are not physically present for work sessions. The Mayor may determine that teleconferencing by the Mayor and/or an Assembly member is necessary due to conditions or provisions directly relating to a disaster, a declaration, excuse me. I have something in my way here. A declared disaster or emergency for a period of thirty days, after which the Assembly shall vote in a regular meeting to extend the disaster or emergency. If the declaration of disaster or emergency is extended, the Assembly will revisit the declaration every thirty days until such time the declaration is set aside. All votes are, excuse me, all votes at meetings are Assembly members, excuse me, where Assembly members are participating by teleconference shall be by roll call. For purposes of this section, teleconferences include Internet video conferencing and other similar, similar realtime two-way communication methods." Long-winded, I know.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second discussion. You want to address your motion?
So basically.
Sorry. So basically, what everybody has been saying is we're trying to get rid of the declaration of the emergency. We're also trying to fix how we meet in meetings during an emergency. We don't need it in, we don't need it to state in Section A that we can teleconference. We don't need it in Section B that we can teleconference. It states it in E that we can teleconference if there's a declaration of an emergency. But what Section E also does is it tells us that the Assembly will reevaluate the declaration every thirty days. Now, some people have said every sixty days. Some people have said ninety days. Some people have said every six months. I put in thirty days because I thought that was a reasonable amount of time for an emergency. Other people are going to think different, and that's fine. That's why we have, you know, people to discuss this. The main part of this is that piece, and that's what I really wanted everybody to to see. Unfortunately, I haven't had a lot of time to get this done, and so I'm reading it tonight.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this amendment? Scott?
Thank you, James. I agree with the thirty days on there and it coming forward. I think as much as possible, the Assembly needs to meet in person and with the public. Most of the time, we don't have much of the public here. What you're saying, I agree with, but I think what we should do is table this so the public can also see it on there. And, and it comes up next month on there. So I just, before I moved to table, I just wouldn't see if anybody else wanted to speak.
Anybody else wishing to speak to this? Jared?
I would be in favor of tabling. I do have a question for James, if that's okay.
Yes.
The, I'm fine with these changes, too. Your amended, the amended language in Section E, "reevaluate every thirty days." Reevaluate for what? What is being reevaluated? Whether or not there's an emergency?
Whether or not there's an emergency at that point.
I, so I, hmm. So I wonder, I don't know, maybe this is a clerk question because this, this section of code is about how we conduct meetings, not about our role or authority in declaring disasters or emergencies. I, if the language, if the intent behind the reevaluation was to reevaluate how we conduct meetings during the declared emergency, I think that's appropriate. But I don't know if having the language in there about, is about actually reevaluating the disaster emergency declaration itself is pertinent. I'm not opposed to the language, but I'm just wondering if it actually does fit in in this section. That's just my, my one, my one big kind of just question, just kind of more of a clarification than than anything.
Scott Smiley?
I agree with Jared on that. We're not talking about declaring the disaster. It's not our job to do that. We're talking about whether or not we're going to meet in person or have teleconferencing. And we would decide that after thirty days. I think thirty days is a good number. I, I wonder a bit about whether the Mayor should make this determination or whether the Assembly should. But it's something that's probably going to have to, have to happen quick. It's hard to find everybody at the same time, so it's probably a good thing, at least the first time around, to have the Mayor do it. So I'm in favor of your changes as long as you agree that we're not changing whether it's a disaster or not, but whether we meet telephonically or in person.
James, you want to address that?
Yeah, first point is the Mayor declares an emergency and the Assembly basically signs off on it. And then the Mayor dissolves the emergency and the Assembly assigns off of on it. So basically, it's the, the Assembly as a whole meeting and having that discussion. So the, at that point, at thirty days, if the Mayor decides to dissolve the emergency, then the Assembly can sign off on it. But we're reevaluating every thirty days. It's basically what this is doing, is bringing us back to task every thirty days. If we're, however you want to word it, I mean, we would have to change some of the language, I would say, whether or not we extend the teleconferencing, because that's not the way it reads. The way it reads is the disaster or emergency. So I did send it to Nova and Lena while I was reading. So they do have a copy, and they'll be sending it to everybody if we do postpone, so you guys can have a moment. But we talked about getting this rewritten. I had a little bit of time to do something, and I decided to, I was going to wait, and then I decided since we brought it back up tonight, well, I was going to read it anyway.
Amy, Scott, do you have your hand up also? Okay, then Scott. And Joe?
Thank you. I'm, I'm in favor to table this until the next, probably work session, so we can talk it out before we go to another regular meeting. But I think the, the idea of ratifying that we're in emergency every thirty days is something that we should add to code. I'm looking at two dot three zero dot zero seven five, which is emergency ordinances. And I think maybe it would be more appropriate to add that to that section than this particular section. And I'm happy, if you want help, James, to do that, or if you got this on your own, I'm happy with that, too. But I think that an appropriate ordinance change so that we, the way that we declare an emergency and then how we deal with the ESC is more appropriate than adding it to this particular thing. And so I think that's been, and I know we've talked about it before, and it's been on my to-do list, but I was kind of holding off until after the budget before I brought the ordinance change forward. I'm glad to see it come up and that people are in favor of that. I think that takes away a lot of the public conversation about just not being in control and not coming out of an emergency how, when they thought we were ready to come out. So I think that that's something that we should do, but it should be in a slightly different section.
Okay, Scott and Joe?
What I'm going to do is go ahead and move to table this so we can get it into a work session and, and work on cleaning it up. The next, Nova, you had a comment?
Mr. Mayor and members of the Assembly, if I may suggest, please, if we could, maybe the maker of the motion retract the motion, and then that way we have, we don't have it on the floor. It seems like it needs to be cleaned up. So if you, if the maker of the motion could retract it with the agreement of the rest of the Assembly, then we can just work off a draft and present that at the work session. But if you're going to postpone it, you can't postpone it at the work session. You need to postpone it at the regular meeting, a date specific. It will allow you time at the work session then to work with different versions of the ordinance, if you.
What I was proposing to do was to postpone this to the June, let's see, we had a regular meet, June sixteenth, regular meeting. Gives us two work sessions to go through because we got the budget to work on next week on the twenty, on the twenty-sixth. So it gets it in writing for everyone. We can look at it, which basically, we need to have it in front of us rather than trying to do it. And it's work session time rather than meeting time.
I agree with that.
So the first thing, I guess, is, as Nova said, do you want to withdraw it, and then we postpone, or do?
Joe, do you want to speak now? Do you want to wait until the work session?
No, he has to withdraw the amendment.
Okay. So James, if you wish to withdraw the amendment and the second agrees, then we will postpone this.
I will retract my amendment.
I will retract my second.
Thank you.
And I will move to postpone this to the June regular meeting of the sixteenth, June sixteenth, regular meeting. Thank you.
We have a second?
Second.
I think we've discussed this enough. Roll call, though, please.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion carries seven zero. Thank you.
You want to read that to them now, or you just want to give it to them at the work session?
Thank you.
Okay. Oh, my screen went blank. What do I do?
Plug it in.
Here we go. All right, that brings us to new business. First up is a resolution FY twenty twenty-three oh one, and that is changing our ability. No, I'm sorry. Establishing the amount of funds to be made available to the Kodiak Island Borough School District from local sources. Do I have a motion? Scott?
Move to adopt Resolution Number FY twenty twenty-three dash zero one.
Second. We have a motion, a second.
Evening. Before you is the annual resolution for funding of the school district. The school district did present their formal funding request to us on April twenty-seventh. So technically, I think you have until April twenty-sixth. However, this is the last regular scheduled meeting you have prior to that date unless you do a special meeting. So it's there for you to discuss.
Okay, discussion. Seeing no discussion, James, go ahead.
Go ahead, Scott.
Okay. I have issues with taking us, this goes to the cap in one fell swoop on there. Basically, a one point six million dollar increase in one year on there. We've been told that there's also a fiscal cliff that is coming up in 2024. And to do this for the 2023 budget and have no resources available to us to help, I do not think is responsible. What I wish to propose is to basically reduce the support of education. Basically, give them eight hundred thousand of the one point six, half this year. We cannot obligate an Assembly for a future year. So, but it's my intent that if I were here to do that, my term ends in October on there. So it's, we, we have a lot of unknowns in our budget, primarily because of the state of Alaska. The legislature has, I think, done a great job, wonderful job this year, with attempting to backfill the school debt, which has put quite a burden on the Kodiak Island Borough residents, and especially the Assembly. There's been, you know, I'll say a lot of trauma within the, the borough with the staff and the Assembly in trying to struggle through the vetoes by the Governor and make that up. So it has created problems. And, and it's one of the things that we hear is that the taxes in Kodiak are expensive. Cost of living in Kodiak is expensive. So that's something that we wish to work on later. But primary purpose of the Kodiak Island Borough is education. I think we are doing that by giving them part of this right now. I would, I would love to give all of it, but there's too many unknowns as to what the Governor is going to do on the budget that's going to affect us. We've, you know, we heard, we were supposed to get fifty percent this year. The legislature passed a hundred percent for the current year. The Governor vetoed none of it, and we got thirty-six percent. The governor vetoed none of it, and we got 36% on there. We're told we're supposed to get up to 42%. But these are the kind of games that keep getting played at the state level, and there is no certainty. Now, I will also say that I was one of the Assembly members that we tried to, we felt that, you know, with the legislature passing each year, 100% reimbursement on, on the school debt, we found it a little bit unfathomable to think that a governor would take that away and put such a burden on all the local communities. But we were wrong, and we made that up. Now, there's potentially the money for backfilling the school debt, which would be tickled if it comes through. But we just have a lot of unknowns ourself on this coming year. If everything worked out, I don't have potentially a problem of coming back and discussing giving them more money. We always have the option during the course of the year to give the school district more money. But I would like to guarantee them, getting them halfway there on it. So my amendment is to lower the total, I guess for simplicity, I'm going to leave the in-kind service alone, because that'll confuse things if I enter that in there. So the total, which is currently in here is 11,955,244, less 800,000, makes that 11,155,244 is my amendment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion.
Jeff?
Yeah, I won't be supporting that amendment. I, I think our primary responsibility as a second-class borough is education, and I think cutting a budget that the manager has presented to us that is balanced, keeping the mill rate stable, by $800,000 reduces the school district by eight teachers. And I don't think any of us up here are qualified to say, which eight, eight teachers are they not going to hire or fill, because they're not going to see that funding. So I, I can't support this. I do appreciate Assemblymember Arnt's comment with regards to the burden that the governor has placed on local communities under his tenure, and I would remind community members of the governor's impact to, to our local economy and our tax base, because he's the one that has sat back and not funded bond debt reimbursement, or has cut it, and, and all of a sudden now we're talking in an election year, let's go ahead and backfill some of this, because we're sitting on money again. And, and then next year, it'll be the same thing. So I think the responsibility does lie with Juno and the governor in that regard, but I, I can't support the amendment. I, I'll be voting no on that.
Scott Smiley.
I'll be voting no as well. To me, the crime is at the level of the state, and it's not just the governor, it's the legislature over the past 20 years, who hasn't adjusted the BSA one little bit, and they're talking about increasing it by 30 bucks this year? What a joke! I mean, these guys have to wake up and see what the cost of education really is. I agree with the statement that our primary function is the education of our community, and the school district does a bang-up job of it. They've got really good people going for it. But, and I'll support this, this amount, but I really think we, we have to do something about the state legislature and the governor, because they're just screwing everybody over.
Joe, go ahead, please.
I think I agree with most of what was said up here so far, even Mr. Arnt, your concern. But I think that with the troubles that we have to attract qualified people to fill the jobs that we have in Kodiak, I think one of the things that we should be able to say is that you should come over here for the education, you know? I mean, the kids in the schools right now are the ones that are going to be leading this community in the future. I think that's important. I, I know that the schools, the schools are getting better. I took part in the Rural Regional Leadership Forum for many years, and it was, I was reminded tonight of the times when we would have these forums, the school district would come up, and there was just multiple complaints about things that were happening. That has been reduced to very few complaints. So the job is being done, and I think by taking funding away, we're destined to go back to what it was before. I don't like to see that. I think that we should be able to come up with a way to make these, the state honor their obligations. But I think that us, we're just passing the punishment on to other people, is what we're doing, and I think that we shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Anybody else? Jared?
Yeah, I'll also be voting against the, the proposed amendment. I, I, the, I think the proposal of reducing by 800,000 is, and I think the main reason why I oppose it is, it's, the number to me seems arbitrary. I'm not sure where that number comes from, and I think as a kind of principle for me, when we ask the, the school district to give us a number, and they ask for a number, we either give them that number, we give them the cap, or we give them the minimum, and that's, and, you know, the minimum's not going to happen. So we asked the borough manager to make a budget that fits with the what, and, and the borough manager and her team made, made this fit with the budget that's balanced. The, I, I don't also understand the, the holding of the school district funding hostage based on what we are calling school debt. It's not school debt, it's borough bond debt. The, the, the school board didn't vote for, for the debt, the teachers didn't vote, the students didn't vote for this debt, the borough voted for the debt. So to me, that's something completely different, and whatever the school district asks should not really rely on this other, this other funding piece. Those two, to me, are, are unrelated. So in the budget that we have before us, this fits, this works, it's reasonable, it's prudent based on what we know about what the governor has put in, and it being an election year. So to me, this is reasonable, it's prudent, and I don't, I, I think that we should just go with the resolution as written, unless I am convinced otherwise.
Any other comments? I guess I'll add my two cents. I won't be voting on this. We have a full Assembly. But we do ask, I'd like to echo some of the things that are said. I understand that there's always an uncertainty when it comes to what the governor signs in the budget. But this is an election year, and he has promised that we'll get 100% funding this year. There's a possibility we may get some back funding, might be great. But with what we're getting, we have a manager that we hired, she gave us a balanced budget that does not raise the mill rate. It gives the school their full ass. We have a elected board, the school board, that looks at their budget, and they go through it, and they're pretty thorough, and they put that number forward. To say we will hold 800,000 back and maybe talk about it later, that's kind of doing to the school district what the, the governor does to us. They got to hire teachers, they got to start hiring now, they got to start fulfilling their budget now. And I think that if we have the money to give it to them, next year, maybe not. Superintendent Mica, is it, I believe? You might be dealing with a different situation next year. But that's no reason to say, well, we may not be able to do it next year, so let's not do it this year. If that's what they need to run the school district, and they do a damn good job of it, if I was voting tonight, I would be voting against the amendment, I'd be voting for the total allotment. With that, any other comments? Amy, I knew you wanted to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a lot of good comments, good discussion. I guess the, I don't think anyone is going to sit up here and say we don't want to hire teachers, because that's just, that's not where anyone's heart is, and we all know that that's our primary duty. I guess the only pull to the other side for me is just, we have, that is our primary responsibility, but that's not our only responsibility, and I want to trust the governor, I really do, but I don't. And so that, that makes it a little bit hard, but I, I love the enthusiasm coming from the other people, and that sways me towards that way. So, I mean, I hope, I hope you're right. I just think that we need to be cognizant of the fact that if we're not right, it's the borough staff budget that's getting cut to pay for it, right? And so that's, that's the trade-off. So if we had to take 800,000 off the top of your staff budget, that, that hurts us a lot. So I just want to keep that in mind and know what they act, like, the cost, there's cost anywhere if we don't get that money. And the, by fully funding, we place the burden of that cost, if the governor doesn't come through 100% on the borough's shoulders, on the, on the staff's budget's shoulders. And so no one's going to say, don't hire teachers. Think Jeff's going to elbow me if I even move closer to him. But I, I think it's wrong not to consider the effect if the governor doesn't come through. And I think as an Assembly, we should all be sitting up here thinking, what is, what would happen to our budget, and what would we do if that happens? And I don't want to hold anyone's money hostage, or put it in escrow, or get an IOU, but I also don't want to have us be dealing with the fallout of what we're going to do if we don't get that amount of money. So school bond debt is not related to the schools, and I think that Assemblymember Griffin is right. I don't think we should look at, well, we're giving the school all of this money in whole, because they're right, they didn't vote for that. But it is part of our responsibility. So as we look at what our primary responsibilities are, that bond debt is one of our responsibilities. It might not be the biggest responsibility, but it will not be ignored. So I did give you no answer on how I was going to vote, but that's just the stuff that's going through my head. I, like, my daughter's in the school system, I had the superintendent, the principal, I had so, my daughter got in a car accident in the parking lot, she's going to kill me for saying this in a public meeting, but I had the whole school system out there helping us and making sure that everyone's okay. Debbie Rohr is the one who called me and told me. I mean, so obviously in support of what they're doing, and I know they're doing a good job, I just am worried about the fallout if the governor doesn't come through. And so I just want everyone to think about that for just a second before we vote at all. Just a thought. Okay, done.
James, you can have the hammer.
You know I don't like it. So a couple of things. I agree with Amy. Nobody would disagree that we don't want to hire teachers. We want as many teachers as we possibly can. That statement is pretty hard to swallow, to say that we're going to not be able to hire teachers, because there's a lot of different ways that you can skin a cat, right? So when we get hit with budget issues, we've got to go back to the table and find ways to cut that budget, okay? The other thing is, why do we have an Assembly? Why does, why does the school district bring their, their fund request to us if, if we don't have the final say in it? So we have the final say. Unfortunately, I wish we didn't. That would be a great solve, but we do, and we have other items on our budget that we have to solve. With that being said, everybody knows that I try and fight for every dollar for the school district for the last three and a half years that I've been on this Assembly. It pains me to say that I agree with Scott on this issue. Drives me nuts, because this is the one time I have to say that I don't trust the governor at all on this, because he's, I won't say it that way. He's very unpredictable in this situation. Basically, I've believed the fact that when he has said in the past that he's going to fund these particular things, that he's going to, and he hasn't done it yet. So he's saying it again. Is he going to do it this year? I highly doubt it. So that would put us in a 2.6 million deficit if he funds us at 50% at the budget we have right now that we are facing. 800,000 is not going to get us very far towards 2.6 million deficit. Where are we going to get that money from? This is 180 degrees from what you heard last year. I was fighting for that money. I'm, I'm in favor of going with the 11,155,244, unfortunately.
Okay, so, then I'm going to call for a vote on the amendment. The amendment is to reduce the funding to the school district by 800,000. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Smiley?
No.
Mr. Smith?
No.
Mr. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado? Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes. Four, motion?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Four noes, three yes.
Okay, that brings us back to the, it's not on the table, actually. Was it, did we, yeah, we did put it on the table.
The main motion's.
The main motion is on the table, the funding at the original ask of 11.9 whatever. Any, any further discussion? Scott?
Yeah, thank you. As most everybody knows, the only one left previous was James from the very beginning. And three years ago, we had a fight to get the money for the school district. And two years ago, we failed, and the school district took a 1.1 million hit on there. And last year, we fought, and we got it back up on there. So yes, I like and have always encouraged giving as much money as we can to the school district. The problem is, and I think James said it very eloquently, we have a governor that you can't trust. He has not, the last three years, this is his fourth budget, the last three years, he has been disingenuous to us. So when you look at, so far, three out of four times, here, three out of three times, he's been disingenuous, I have no choice but to do that. So did I enjoy doing that amendment? No. But we have a budget that's, we have a balanced budget that is based upon some assumptions I can't agree with. That's the bottom line. So we'll see what happens. Thank you. With, at the, at the state level, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else want to address this? Are we done? Can I have a roll call vote on the motion on the floor?
Mr. Smiley?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Turner?
No.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Arnt?
No.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes.
Would anyone like to change their vote? Motion passes, 5-2.
Okay, with that, I think we should take a 10-minute break, and we'll resume the meeting at 10 to 8.